Call this meeting to order. Please silence all your electronic devices so we can conduct the people's business and stand for the invitation given by council member.
Please join me in the Lord's prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Father, who art in heaven.
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this name, dear brethren, and forgive us our trespasses. Let us be free of those trespasses against us and leave us none to perpetration but glory to us from evil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You've all received a copy of the January 2022 minutes. Everybody have a chance to look those over? Is there any concerns, omissions? Okay, we have consensus to approve those minutes?
Yes.
Okay. We've also received the December 2021 financials. Any questions or concerns on those? Okay, so we in consensus approve those?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved. We have a few agenda items, we'll sign those now. Item 10, 2022, the lead agency for the secrets of the 145 and 137 Pro. 11, 2022, the actual zoning change. 12, 2022, the increase to bulk waste discharge, Mr. Camalee. 13, 2022, the budget ordinance and it's just for the scheduling of the public hearing, Ms. Pacino. 14, 2022, the capital projects and funds transfer for the capital projects, Mr. Veely. 15, 2022, the ice rink naming rights, Mr. Veely, you requested that one. And 16, 2022, the water rates. Mr. Veely. Water rates is not too popular. Any communications? The next city council conference meeting will be held on Monday, February 28, 7:00 PM at City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Also, I sent you an email earlier in the week. I received a request from, what county was that, this week ago?
Oneida County.
Oneida County. Oneida County wanted us to sign on to a letter supporting funding of municipal owned stadiums. That would be our own stadium where the Muck Dogs are playing. So, did you guys have a chance to look that over? Are you in agreement? I didn't want to just sign my name on anything without, it seemed like a good idea to petition there's some money available and they're asking for that money to be dispersed among the remaining small stadiums that are left in the state.
We're gonna need it.
Yeah, we can use all the help we can get. So, I will, it's not really a voting matter, I'm just looking for like a direction from you guys.
I had a question, George, did you get to review it? Yeah, was no downside to any there?
No, really. It was very, basically saying you have money, can you please allocate it towards the...
Send it to us.
I did.
Send it to our stadium.
I sent you the email, but I didn't. It would have to be evenly distributed, but even any amount would be helpful if they can do that, and that's a great idea, they came up with that. So, we will let the city manager kind of let them know.
Shouldn't you maybe reword that instead of stadiums, also arenas?
I tried that already, but there's, the money was supposedly for like a bill stadium, they're gonna give it to the bills, and they wanted to say, well, if you're giving out money for stadiums, it wasn't talking about this.
I'll try.
I thought that same thing, but you listed all the, you look at the letter, it lists all the cities that have those stadiums, and it talks about Robbie being the owner of the Muck Dogs and that kind of thing. So, there's other owners that are doing the same thing.
Yes.
And he mentioned the collegiate league.
Perfect league, yeah.
Yeah, the perfect league, and I received it, I apologize. So, it's right there, the actual office from the Oneida County Executive is there, not the actual mailman, so it's there, it's part of the agenda. City Attorney's Report?
No, there's a report out this time, Mayor Washington, Brian, the chief of justice back in the city.
Okay, City Manager's Report?
Thank you, Council President. Currently, myself, the police chief, and Ray Tort have been meeting with Ashley McGrath on the review of operations and pre-design work for the police facility. So, those meetings take about two to four hours of our time every single week to complete as the firm gets up and running with the design of the new police station. As we get closer to final design, it'll certainly encompass more time, and members of the police force have also been involved in some of these meetings as well. So, I wanted everyone to know that that process is kicked off and underway. Some of the meetings are in person, some have been on Zoom, so we've utilized technology when we can to have those meetings. So far, we're very pleased with the design firm and also Ken Pearl, who is helping us from Architects Unlimited. So, that process is going well, and hopefully we'll have a further update at future council meetings. The Bureau of Maintenance and Fire Facility project that has been put on hold numerous times, you've heard about it often, is also kicking off the design work, and the engineering firm will be in to those facilities actually tomorrow, tomorrow Wednesday, getting ready to prepare the bid specifications so we can take the project out to bid. Myself, Michael Ficarella, and the operators at the water and wastewater treatment plant have made progress on the engineering analysis for the water plant, the water system, as well as the headworks analysis at the wastewater treatment plant. We'll be bidding out filter media replacement, one of the projects we need to grow a little more water capacity at the water treatment plant, so you'll see those resolutions coming forward at the next two meetings. Bill Davis continues to work through LED light conversion, so we are looking to convert all of the city-owned lights to LED. We're also talking with NIPA, and we've asked National Grid for a buyout price of all the lights in the city, so there's an additional roughly 946 lights that we are considering the return on investment if those were then replaced to LEDs and then operated by the city. It might cut down on the lead time to have those lights replaced and cut down on constituent concerns that we, I know you all get calls, as do we. So, we're exploring that right now and hope to come back to you if that is feasible and is a project we would then bond out and use current operations to pay for. So, that's another item we're working on. We have solicited proposals for the mall million-dollar DRI project, and we are in the process of, we have interviewed them and we will be bringing one forward to the next meeting. This firm would start on design work for the mall million dollars, which is focused mainly on the silos, and we're, again, contractually obligated to make sure that those are fixed up, and we're looking at replacing some flooring and painting with the cost of construction prices and materials prices. We hope to do as much as we possibly can with that million-dollar DRI grant. The Jackson Square project will be going back out to bid. As you're aware, it came in almost two times over the price we thought it would, so the architecture firm needed to make some modifications, and they'll be putting that back out to bid, and hopefully we can come in at a price we can handle with, again, this is a state DRI grant of $750,000. There's been a lot of activity in the human resource office with hiring. DPW hired a new operator. We are extending the Christmas tree pickup. We wanted everyone to know with snow operations, the crews just have not been out to finish Christmas tree pickup, so they will get back to that as they move through snow operations. The police are currently filling three positions, and they hope to have those candidates make an academy in Niagara County in March. The fire department is filling six positions, and again, candidates going to an academy in late March. The fire department continues to work on CRS recertification for flood plain and insurance rating for citizens, and the administrative department is continuing to move through the IT and software projects as we move along. So, that is my update. Any questions?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Community reports?
I have two. One of them, I'm embarrassed to say, I've forgotten the date of. Bid is doing a beer walk, which is comparable to a wine walk, and it will be downtown, including all the stores. And, I'm sorry, I wrote the date down and didn't really bring the right piece of paper.
I'll look it up for you.
It's coming very, very soon.
Is that February, you think?
Yeah, yeah, it is. So, it's either next weekend or the weekend after. I'm so sorry. But meanwhile, let me tell you that GoArt, who is always trying to come up with their own money for our cultural side, is having a very interesting thing going on. They're giving away two weddings. If you have a young relative who is looking to get married, this includes the GoArt building, which is gorgeous, dinner, the flowers, the music, the whole shoot and match, and a room at one of the local hotels. I mean, it's just everything, and all you have to do is make out a little plea on film and send it down to GoArt, and they're giving away two of them. It is really, really adorable. It would be worth its time because it's not, this is not some shabby place, this is a historic building that is gorgeous.
Patty, the February walk is Saturday, February 26.
26, okay, I'm sorry.
Yep, 5 to 8:00 PM.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Does Bid ever do anything for like kids? Like something for kids to get together?
I don't know if they did like a beggars.
There's always alcohol in it.
I don't know if they...
They have their Christmas in the city.
There's always house for like summer time for...
They do things within something, like when they have summer in the city, there are kids adventures. When they do Christmas in the city, there are kids adventures. One that is just specifically for kids, they haven't done within the time I've been working with them, but it's something that I would take back and ask them about because it's, there are things that could be done, especially with holidays. You know, there's so many days when the kids are off school. That would be a great idea. I will take it back to the next meeting.
Yeah, they're the future shoppers, right, Polly?
Yeah.
I think they do a beggars' night, so they at least get kids. A beggars' night, like before Halloween and...
Do they?
I thought they did.
I don't remember one.
Patty's right, they do horse rides, Christmas in the city, the whole Christmas, the whole Christmas shebang.
But there's specific things for kids.
Christmas in the city, is the parade, floats, and all that.
Yeah. Yep, and there are activities for them where they can go make things.
Look, as you refer to, more...
More things.
More than kids.
And I will bring that up.
Anything else? Any public comments? No removal on sidewalk, Congress, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I'm not passing these around one at a time, which is a photograph. This, I want everybody to understand, is very constructive, I think our city does one heck of a job, but I did receive some complaints, and it wasn't really about the city, it was about, I think we need to re-educate some of the people in the community. They don't seem to get a dispersed picture. I took two pictures, and somebody had the entrance of their driveway plowed up, and it left the snow, went out about seven feet into the street, and it was pretty high. As you got close to the curb, it was about four feet high, so I called the city manager, she advised me she wasn't where she could do anything, just call dispatch, which I did call, and I reported it, and I was hoping that somebody could come by and push it back with a plow. Then there were a couple independent operators, Good Samaritan types, they came by, saw the situation. They kind of pushed it out of the way, but it compacted it and made it worse. There was an officer who was apparently dispatched, and they said it wasn't an immediate hazard, but as the day progressed, traffic coming down the street was swerving around, this pile of snow, which is still there, now it's a pile of ice, into incoming traffic, and the parking situation, it did look a little hazardous. So, there's...
Where was it?
It was just two, couple houses away from me.
Oh, I'm in...
Yeah, yeah, and one of the things probably should have been done, maybe the officer should have went to the house, knocked on the door, found out who plowed the driveway, and had him come back and fix it and not do it again. But this also led to the situation I had, actually, I had a call about five minutes before I was at the house to come here tonight, it was the second call today, but the thing is people are piling snow up on the sidewalk. The second photograph shows where a business plowed their parking lot and put all the snow on the sidewalk. Now, that's a big block of ice, it's about six foot high. And it's, people don't, and the mailman even complained, I attuned it, for mail carriers complains, yeah, this is killing us. They were, the one night they showed up in my house at 7:00 AM, I said, what's going on? I said, we'd just have to walk in the streets and everything else. And where that picture was taken, the mail carrier was helping some senior citizen with a walker, walking main street, they couldn't even walk down the sidewalk, which, you know, I don't know, maybe like having a pre-written notice that you can't do this, you know, it's an offensive.
Did you get the work person involved, or...
No, no, I didn't. Why, that Sunday morning, I just called Rachel. And this one, this lady called today, and, or she called a couple days ago, and this was her sidewalk, and, you know, this is a tough moment. The sidewalk plow goes by a week later after it's been done, and the lawn gets ripped up, and she's got huge chunks of ice on her sidewalk. She always kept the sidewalk clean, she said, no, I don't know how to get rid of these chunks of ice. So...
I mean, you know, do we want to do sidewalks or not? I mean, there's going to be some residual...
I think it's, I think it's a problem, you know, because the sidewalk plows designed now for the newer sidewalks, handicapped accessible sidewalks, so if you have a narrow sidewalk and it has frozen, well, it's going to be torn up, but it...
Now, just for the sake of context, every year since I was orientated as a new council member, I try to schedule meetings with all the departments, and I learned a lot of things each time, and I've learned so much, this time was actually the most learning experience I had. And one of the things, Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, was, I don't know about the sidewalk plows being designed for anything, but the youngest plow we got is like, what, 25 years old?
Ninety, twenty-three.
So, it's 20 years old, and the other one's like 39 years old.
Thirty-nine, forty-four.
And the one we probably should have got rid of that's barely running, what age is that one?
Forty-four.
So, I mean, it's, the fleet needs some maintenance there, and maybe that's probably a design that they fixed like 25 years ago, where it maybe kicks the snow back out of the sidewalk.
I was told a few years ago, Matt told me that the sidewalk plows are designed around handicapped wood sidewalks, which, you know, a lot of the sidewalks, and that's a problem, just I don't think they're saying simple solution. As I explained to the homeowner, I said, the problem is you and your neighbors may clean your sidewalk, and then five houses away, they don't. They don't do anything, and, you know, we do need to get them cleaned, so. But they, what they just suggested was, they thought maybe if we had a committee with half a dozen residents from different parts of the city to sit down, and maybe some areas don't need to be plowed initially, or at all, or other areas do, I don't know. But I just asked...
I was following you until you said commit, and then I was like, do we really need to make it that complicated?
That's how you never get anything done, you turn it over.
Not what we want to do.
But in any event, I think the serious ones are the plowing of snow into the streets and over the sidewalk.
Yes.
Which into the streets is a violation of state law, and over the sidewalks is a violation of a city.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I think maybe with like a pre-printed handout or whoever, police and VPW, anybody can go by and say, excuse me, here, you better look this over, you know. I, getting tickets is something can be counterproductive, we just don't want to have snow piled up like you can see in the photographs on it.
So, did you have a chance to look into that?
The item council member Byakowski mentioned about the snow in the road, he did call dispatch, and a police officer determined it wasn't a hazard with their judgment, so I have to go with their judgment that that was not a hazard, and when plows came back around, the hope was that they would get to that. I think there's a lot of snow this year compared to the past few years, and there's a lot of clearing of sidewalks and roads and of driveways that needs to be done, and a lot of times neighbors have prefigured out how they're going to do that, where they're going to place their snow, and other times people just move in and don't really know where to place the snow and how to do it. And I think the volume of snow caused issues here, but I would like to personally thank our DPW crew for the tremendous job they've done. They haven't stopped working since the beginning of January when all this snow came down, and they do prioritize the roads to move traffic through, and if there's six inches or more, they will do what they call, and Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, cut through on the sidewalks. So, basically, in cases where someone has done their sidewalk, they may see the treads of the machine that went through, and that's what that other picture is you're seeing. So, they try to push through that snow so people have the ability to then walk on the sidewalks. It's melting now, and that's a good thing, and every year it does melt. So, I found in my research that the council has been talking about this since 1926, and there has never been an easy answer. Residents are responsible for clearing in front of their house, in the case council member Byakowski is referring to. The resident did clear it, but then our sidewalk plow came through and left the track marks in the sidewalk, which I get is frustrating, but the next move is to go out and just kind of brush up behind that. So, we do have in ordinance, and we do ask residents to take care of their snow removal. I know some residents can't get to it, they may be elderly or disabled, but you plan for it just like you plan your garbage service or your cable. You know, you plan to get Johnny down the street to come for $20 when it snows over a few inches and do that for you. So, I think the snow caught people off guard this year because we've had a few mild winters.
Well, and there's no place to pile. I mean, you got one or two storms, and then even my business never had a problem, and now I'm like, where do I put the additional storm snow? It's just not, and I get it, and it's frustrating, but as long as I've lived here, we've had some winters that have been good, and lately they have been, and others that are like this, where you just get pounded and you just can't keep up with it, you move it, and the next day you're plowing again, and then, I do agree with Bob though, there's, maybe there's, in the fall, or if we're anticipating snow, maybe we can do some kind of outreach and remind those that plow for a living, not professional DPW people, but people that do it, there is some things to consider, and that they are responsible for where they put that snow, and don't, we shouldn't have to be in the awkward position to have to chase them down and make them come back and move it. This is something that you said, we can keep, you know, tell the people that are hiring to say, make sure when you put it, you have a place, think ahead of where you might want to put this, so you don't end up on your neighbor's front lawn, which we had on, I think Evan Street, they were quite upset when it got pushed on their lawn, and that was wrong, that they should have never paid attention.
I think the bigger thing is disheartening, though, is when I see a business with something like this, and now we have a solid block of ice. I wouldn't want to be in that plow and building up speed and hit that because somebody's going to get hurt, and quite a few of the businesses, they're commercial plowing people could care of, they just pile it anyplace.
Yeah, I mean, in a case like this, we're seeing that because we had so much snow, they don't know where to put it, they put it up where they normally do. I saw Tops, not only did they push it out to the side, but they pushed it into their fence for the holding pot, and they basically caved the whole fence in. I mean, I don't think that was part of their plan, but I mean, they had no place else to put it, and as they kept pushing it, it's heavy, and it just caved that thing in, so it's going to melt, and then that fence is going to need expensive repairs, it's not going to be inexpensive.
And I think, you know, I've been hearing a lot of good complimentary things about getting the corners cleaned up like on Ellicott Street and all that. I think sometimes people, a lot of people just expect the city to do everything, and they don't even shovel up paths to their house for their mailman, which is disheartening, you know, I mean, you have to, you have to get away from the computer once in a while and get outside and get some fresh air.
Well, and again, we're a bunch of neighbors, I mean, if you have somebody next door like I do when they're not home, it doesn't hurt anything to just run the snowblower just another few feet farther. I was out of town when I came home, somebody had done my sidewalk, I don't know who did it, but my driveway wasn't done, but my sidewalk was done, so that obligated me for the city ordinance part of it, but, you know, I appreciate that, like, you know, we did it, I thank them for it.
You got the wrong house.
Yeah, maybe. I'll still thank them for it. So, I mean, that's the thing, is we, you know, when I was younger, we would help each other, we wouldn't even ask for money, we would just shovel the sidewalks.
Maybe we need to be more vocal in the local media about that. What I'm thinking about is, I live in an old neighborhood, I'm considering myself old, and the people around me are old, but I have three kids who come and use the snowblower, I'm lucky. I get calls from people who say, the city hasn't done my sidewalk, and I explain that the city doesn't do all sidewalks. I guess I'm not clear on what sidewalks the city does do and doesn't do, how do I explain that?
After an event where we have staff, we have priority routes where we hit the main arteries within the city, your main streets, your oak, and then we have priority school routes, which were designated by the school district some years back. We hit those first. If we still need to go ahead and do sidewalks, we have two distinct routes, one for the north side, one for the south side, and we just start working our way through the city.
Okay. So, there's no specific, I mean, if someone says, when are they going to plow my sidewalk? I can't really say, well, the 26th of December, they'll be there at 3:00.
You're not staffed for that one.
Good. That explains it for you.
In this case, we kept...
It's a supplemental operation.
There was a storm, I think, in the beginning of Martin Luther King, I think it was a holiday when we had, first of all, was it on?
That began on the evening of 16th, really hit us on the 17th, we had sidewalk plows that persisted through until the morning of the 18th. We sent crews home to get rested, next morning, we sent out sidewalk plows.
Okay, so it is sporadic, it happens when it can happen?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
Did you have a lot of breakdowns, equipment failures?
Oh, we had 40 some odd, we were just running like that, yes, we did.
That always helps.
Can I tell you, I was 10, 11 years old, my friends had me a ton of money shuffling driveways and shuffling sidewalks.
We don't get that anymore, we don't get kids.
The last thing, I just wanted to comment on this, you know, I know it makes it impossible to plow sidewalks, but I'm just astounded, it's the number of people that park over sidewalks, so they park over the sidewalk all night, leave a car there in the morning, and people have to go off, and walk into the street and get around. And I think that's something to, boy, see that, give me a ticket, that's it, I mean, it's just, it's the same process.
That makes it very difficult to sidewalk plow.
Pardon?
That makes it very difficult to sidewalk plow.
Especially if you park a white vehicle over the sidewalk, it's snowstorm, it's not a good combination.
And it's the same people do it all the time.
Which is no common sense.
Yeah, I mean, it's unfortunate, and I think some just aren't able to do that, I mean, they're tight, snow removal, they put the snow in the end of the driveway, now it's less parking. I got this, I don't know where I received this, I think I got it recently, it was a summary of responsibilities from Bureau of Maintenance, November 21, 2017, and it talked about snow, and there's 17 employees that run 14 pieces of equipment during a full route, this is what it says, you're correcting it, I'm wrong here. So, there's 135 miles of roadway in the city, so that means there's, when they're running that equipment, there's pretty much not enough people to fill all the equipment, if you think about it, because not everybody's always there, they're down a few people, so it's impossible to do that, and we don't always need a full staff of 50 people during the regular part of the year, but we get that weird storm, we wish we had all those people. So, it's a kind of a fine balance between overstaffing and raising taxes to try to get through what we need, and I guess I would ask people to just be patient, when we have a big storm, we're going to get to it within our means, but it might take us a little while, but we're going to do our best to get there, and they do, and I've seen them work pretty much 24 hours around the clock, and they try to, tried it many different ways, and it's a lot of work, a lot of equipment breaking down all the time, and it's not fun to be underneath a plow in the middle of a blizzard, barehanded, trying to free something up so they can tow it to the garage to get it fixed in the middle of when they need it. So, I just want to thank them guys for showing up and for doing their best, and it's kind of a responsibility on council a little bit because we try to keep it as minimal staff in every department as we can, and every once in a while we have these events, and there's just no way around it, we have to do the best we can. Most of the time, 99% of the time, we got it covered, so it's just a, it's a balance that we try to achieve, and it's not always the best, but we will get to it.
Getting to Bob's issue, first of all, like it's been said a number of times tonight, this is a unique winter. this is a unique winter. We don't get winters like this all the time. When you get this much snow, two storms in a row like that, I think the average person realizes that there's just so much you can do. But when it comes to the private residential plow companies, they all know. They all know what the rules are. And I think that at some points, we just, we just deal with the issues as they, as they arise. And if need be, we can contact the plow company and say, "Hey, you're, you know, you're not going by code, okay?" And let them know that. They already know that. But I think that the situation that Bob had, the picture of the business on Main Street, that's something that we need to go after. Ultimately, it's the property owner's responsibility. So, that's one that you can go after and say, "Hey, you've just taken all your snow, and now it's on the city sidewalk. You're responsible to clear the sidewalk, number one. Number two, you've not only not cleared it, but now you've put an ice pile. So, get rid of it. At your expense, get rid of it, or we'll have to come down and do it and charge you for it." And that's it. I mean, it's very simple. When somebody violates that, like we talked about parking across the sidewalk. I can't park my, my vehicle over the sidewalk without getting cited for it. It's the same thing. He's blocking the sidewalk. I don't care what he's blocking it with. He's blocking it. So, a situation like that, we can, we can go handle that individually. That's-
I agree with you. The individual case, I mean, you figure 5,000 driveways in the city, and there's only about a thousand that have had complaints like that. Handle them individually and call dispatch and report it. Let the officer go down and make a determination and try to find out who violated. Again, writing the ticket would be easy, but it would be a lot better to give a little public service education first.
You're doing it wrong.
And repeatedly now, sometimes the same tow person or the plow person is doing several driveways in the city. So, that would help maybe on several occasions.
And that's a, you know, that's a perfect example of sloppiness on the plow part. But I got to say, with all this snow, I actually was going down the street the other day, kind of thinking to myself, "These private plow companies have done really a pretty good job themselves. Where do they put the snow?" You know? And a lot of them have gotten creative where they put it, and it's out of the way. So, I think generally speaking, the plow companies have done a good job this winter.
That one's unique because you could, they could push it towards the other bank, and it's the creek right there. Why would you, I think, maybe it's new, there's lots, sometimes there's new people that come in and take over.
I think it's like, you're all set about supply operators. There's a lot of, this year, there's more independent operators than I've ever seen. I think everybody will think of that.
Right. Once there's a snowstorm, that's what happens.
But again, ultimately, it's up to the property owner. It's his responsibility or her responsibility.
The code says.
Yeah. And so, they have to go after their plow company and say, "Hey, what'd you do that for? Now get rid of it." So.
All right. Anything else?
There's a lot of time on snow.
So, I think, I guess the bottom line is, Rachel, from what I'm gathering from the discussion is, you know, we'll try to handle this on a case-by-case basis. It seems like it's sort of the private plows, the sidewalk issue that, you know, it can happen. And we had a complaint the other day, and I referred it to Rachel. It's being handled, and I'm going to follow up with that person tomorrow, make sure it's okay. But it's just a simple phone call, and the proper people get notified and we handle. That's what we do. So, if you have a concern, if you have a problem, contact the city, city administrative offices. The number's in the book, 345-6300, I believe, will get you the switchboard or the system. And you can file your complaint, and we'll handle it. All right. Any unfinished business?
Okay. Resolution 10, 2022. Mr. Beckett?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution suggesting the City of Batavia is lead agency under the State Environmental Quality Review Act for amendment to the zoning map for zoning 145 and 147 Pearl Street from a P1 planned development district to R2 residential district and determining the significance under a secret.
Second to that. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.
Council member Bailey?
Yes.
Council member Pacino?
Yes.
Council member Canelli?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 11, 2022. Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to adopt an ordinance amending check of 190 entitled zoning of the City of Batavia Municipal Code to amend to the zoning map of the City of Batavia.
Second to that. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Council member Pacino?
Yes.
Council member Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 12, 2022. Mr. Canelli, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to increase the cost of bulk waste discharge.
Second to that. Mr. McGinnis? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Council member Canelli?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.
Council member Bailey?
Yes.
Council member Pacino?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 13, 2022. Ms. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution introducing the 2022 to 2023 budget ordinance and scheduling a public hearing.
Second to that. Mr. McGinnis? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Council member Pacino?
Yes.
Council member Canelli?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.
Council member Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 14, 2022. Ms. Bailey, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to establish and update current capital projects and transfer funds for capital project budgets.
Second to that. Mr. McGinnis? Questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Council member Bailey?
Yes.
Council member Pacino?
Yes.
Council member Canelli?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 15, 2022. Mr. Bailey, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize the council president to sign a naming rights agreement for the Batavia Estrella.
Second to that. Ms. Canelli? Any questions or concerns?
I'd just like to state again, I really appreciate the citizens coming forward and doing this. And I think it's a good move forward.
Anyone else? Call the roll please.
Council member Bailey?
Yes.
Council member Canelli?
Yes.
Council member Canelli?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.
Resolution 16, 2022. Mr. Bailey, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution introducing a local law amending section 184-14 A, B, C, and O of Batavia Municipal Code to establish new water rates, meter fees, and camper pool fees, and providing for public notice and hearings.
Second to that. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll please.
Council member Bailey?
Yes.
Council member Pacino?
Yes.
Council member Canelli?
Yes.
Council member McGinnis?
Yes.
Council member Baikowski?
Yes.
Council member Jankowski?
Yes.
Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1H of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of a municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities or sale or exchange of securities held by such public body, but only when publicity would substantially affect the value thereof. And whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1F of the Public Officers Law permits the legislative body of a municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the City Council does hereby enter into executive session.
Second to that. Mr. Baikowski? Call the roll please.
Council member Pacino?
Yes.
Council member Canelli?